Morganton City Council, September 11, 2023. I'm going to ask Chief Weston if he'll come forward for a special presentation.
Good evening, City Council, City Manager, Mayor. September 11 was a day in my lifetime that will live in our infamy. As many of you are aware of the terrorist attacks in our country that occurred that day. Our nation lost, New York lost 343 firefighters along with 72 law enforcement officers. Nearly 3,000 people died that day, in a single day. A day much like this is 22 years. We reflect back on that. May we never forget the sacrifices that those people made going in to protect the lives of others. At this time, I'd like for our honor guard to form a presentation. Those of you that are able to, would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. This time, I'd like to call on Pastor David Roy of the North Morganton Methodist Church for an invocation. Pastor Roy?
Mayor, Council. As Chief Weston has just made us so powerfully aware, this is the 22nd anniversary of one of the most tragic and fateful days in the life of our nation. The fact that this council is meeting tonight, I believe, is a great tribute and a great witness to the truth that tyranny will not prevail, but justice and civil government will. So thank you for your efforts and your energy tonight. Let us pray. Almighty God, as this council meets on this occasion, we do thank you for this nation, for our state, for our community, and for civil government. We thank you for the freedom which enables us to be able to come to a meeting such as this and to express opinions and perspectives. We ask tonight that you would be with each citizen who has gathered here and with these public officials. We thank you for their commitment. Their responsibility is a weighty one. Grant unto them discernment. Grant unto them wisdom. And grant unto them courage, O God, to make difficult decisions when difficult decisions are required. May your will be done, in your son's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Roy. Again, I'd like to introduce council to my far right, Wendy Cato, Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Jernigan, City Council. Mr. Vina, our city attorney is out of town tonight. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Butch McSwain, City Council. Chris Hawkins, City Council. Renee Carswell, who is a city clerk and our interpreters for the deaf. Ernest Williams IV and Jessica Hallfield. This time, I'd like to call our main, no, I'd like to talk about a service pin. Stephen Mills, who is superintendent of our cemetery and grounds in Public Works, has been with us 20 years. He was unable to be with us. His service pin has been presented to him. At this time, I'd like to call Abby Neltz, Gentry Neltz, our Main Street manager, forward to give us a Main Street update and festival recap, please. Abby, thank you so much.
She's still walking.
I'm still walking, barely. I'd like to be asleep. Oh, good evening. This past weekend was the 41st Annual Morganton Festival in downtown. I saw many of you. Thank you so much for volunteering. We dodged quite the storms, I would say, starting out the weekend, Thursday during setup, even Friday. I just wasn't sure if the festival would be able to happen. But we, I mean, we dodged it. I don't know. The storms went around us. We got just a little wet here and there, but our over 200 volunteers that assisted during setup through the event and during cleanup had smiles on their faces the whole time. And for our residents and visitors that attended, I know they had a great time. We were able to put on all the events as planned, with the exception of just a few Pepsi stage performances. But I am just thrilled that we were still able to hold this event, given the weather situation. The Historic Morganton Festival supports the City of Morganton Main Street Office. And I'll probably say this until I'm blue in the face, but the Historic Morganton Festival is a separate nonprofit from the city. We have to raise our money for all of our events, including the festival, the TGIF, Summer Concert Series, and the Farmer's Market. And we have wonderful sponsors that help us put on these free community events. And so we are a separate nonprofit, but what we do with the Historic Morganton Festival directly supports the Main Street Office. It's one of the ways that we support the economic vitality of downtown by offering these events because they support our brick and mortar stores, but they also go to support things like our gas stations, our restaurants outside of downtown. Really, the city of Morganton and Burke County benefits from these events. And in addition to those things, it also supports our hotels. I know that the Fairfield Inn was booked solid this weekend, and I know that the festival had a lot to do with that. So I want to extend a great thank you to the entire city team because we do have support through all of the departments to make the festival happen with support. And I want to give a big shout out to our street team, sanitation team, because they really make it look like an event never took place by Sunday morning. And again, just a great big thank you to everyone that attended as well as volunteered during the festival weekend. Now, I'd like to give an update for the City of Morganton Main Street Office. This is something I've been doing for a couple of years now, and it reviews our statistics for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. I am required to report our annual statistics to the North Carolina Department of Commerce annually, which then goes to the National Main Street Program and is a part of the reason why we stay accredited. So Chad, if you will go to the next slide. As an overview, downtown Morganton is comprised of 38 city blocks. We have 157 housing units and counting. I'd like for a few more to pop up quicker than we currently have on slate. Over 300 commercial spaces, which equates to well over 2 million square feet of downtown This year was a huge year of public and private investment. We saw over $7.4 million, which was a 61% increase from the previous fiscal year. I want to note that a lot of the work that takes place within downtown takes years of planning to see a project come to fruition or to see businesses or housing units come to fruition, and it's investments like these that help make them move quicker. But we are always looking at years ahead and trying to make things happen. We had a tough year with the loss of Catawba Brewing Company in October, but I believe it was two weeks later that Hillman Brewery made the announcement, or Hillman Beer, rather, made the announcement that they were coming to downtown. We saw a net gain of three businesses, a loss of one full-time job, and an addition of 18 part-time jobs downtown. We had six complete building rehabs, 12 facade improvements. And just to note that if you do have a building within the CBD, within the downtown, the Main Street Office has a facade grant program that funds up to $2,000 for facades, and a lot of our property owners do utilize that incentive. This past fiscal year, '22 to '23, was our first year fully back from COVID, and we had 2,592 and a half hours of volunteer time given to the Main Street Office. And that included events, but also things like board meetings and planning sessions. That was a 66% increase from last year. And with a current rate of $29.86, that, oh Chad, I need that backup. That gave, you know, a lot of money, a lot of money in donated time, $77,412. Next slide. And like I mentioned, with the Historic Morganton Festival nonprofit, a part of the Main Street Economic Development Approach includes promotions, and there were 194 events programmed by the Main Street Office Downtown Development Association/Historic Morganton Festival. And with that, I associate an estimated attendee. So I go through the events, estimate the number of people there, estimate the average that a person was likely to spend during that event, which I still think it's a conservative estimate, but it equates to $2.6 million in just those events alone. So 194 events programmed in our office, that doesn't go on to talk about the other promotional events that we all know. We've seen a huge increase since the Courthouse Square has been redone. So very conservative amount there. But we still have a lot more work to do. We know that we need more housing. We know that we need more restaurants in downtown. We have a current vacancy within those 300 buildings, commercial spaces in downtown of approximately 7%. And there's some other things that we're constantly working on trying to chip away. The list does go on. So I'm here to remind everyone that Main Street matters. What we do does matter. We're in it for the long haul. We know that there's work to be done. And I just thank mayor and council for your continued support, both volunteering and checking in, and then also what you do just day to day. So thank you so much for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great report. Abby, you did a great job, and of course, we are accredited again, and that's, not all Main Street programs are get accreditation.
No, and there is a new accreditation process that was just unleashed this past year that is more stringent, and Morganton still maintains their accreditation. I am not too shy to say that we are one of the Main Street poster childs of North Carolina.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ed.
Any questions? Thank you for a great job.
Thank you.
Great report.
Next, I'll ask Greg Branch, Director of Compass Cable, to give us a Compass update, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak and give you an update about Compass. Seems like it's been forever since we started this process of updating and turning everything around. As far as the digital upgrade that we did back during COVID, we started that to get to where we're at today. But as of September 1, we rolled out our new gig, Internet Service, residential and commercial. We've been advertising for the residential through commercials on TV and radio. We had our booth at the festival, giving out some promotional items and telling people about our new gig service. We're excited about it. Like I said, it seemed like it took forever to get all that switched out, and I'm going to have Chad to run our commercial that we're running. It's a 36.
It's time to supercharge your internet with 1GB Ultra Extreme Broadband from Compass. Get ready for high-gear downloads that power buffer-free streaming, gaming sharing, and surfing, and fire up all your devices at once with reliable speeds amplified by the latest Wi-Fi equipment. 1GB Ultra Extreme is just $99.95 per month for a limited time. Call or visit compassextreme.com to supercharge your internet today.
So that's what we've been running. We got the gig for $99.95 a month for a limited time, and so, yeah, we're excited to offer that. And if anybody's got any questions about what we're doing and how they can get it, just give us a call, 438-5353.
Greg, this is for businesses and residential, correct?
It is. The $99 is a residential promotional rate. We are running promotional rate for businesses, too. So give us a call. We'd be glad to get you hooked up. We have managed services from Wi-Fi, actually residential, whole-home Wi-Fi. And so our team does a lot of stuff to help, and just let us know if we can help. And of course, I've got another, you know, something else coming up about video that we're excited about as well, and the items for business.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is the proclamation. It's the Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 through October 15. I'll ask Charley Mendoza to come forward to the letter. And I would like to read this proclamation. Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation, September 15, October 15, 2023. Whereas the City of Morganton, North Carolina, is a diverse and inclusive community that values and celebrates its rich cultural heritage. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a nationally recognized observance celebrated from September 15 to October 15 each year, providing an opportunity for all to recognize and honor the contributions, culture, and history of Hispanics. And whereas Morganton is home to a vibrant and growing Hispanic community who are enriching our community through their traditions, music, art, cuisine, language, and heritage, serving as an inspiration to all who seek freedom, opportunity, and a new beginning for themselves and their children. And whereas 23% of Morganton residents identify as Hispanic, making it essential for the City of Morganton to recognize and showcase the achievements, talents, and contribution of Hispanic residents in Morganton, including social, cultural, and economic impacts that are helping to shape the city's future. And whereas Morganton promotes and fosters inclusivity, understanding, and appreciation of the Hispanic cultures, and encourages dialogue and collaboration among all residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Morganton, North Carolina, that the city hereby proclaim September 15 to October 15, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Morganton. The City Council encourages all residents to join in, celebrating the cultural richness of our Hispanic neighbors, fostering unity, and creating a more inclusive Morganton for future generations. Adopted this 11th day of September 2023, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Renee Carswell, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I ask Chris Jernigan if he'll present that proclamation, please.
As the mayor has read to us, we are very excited about our Hispanic neighbors and the enrichment that it brings to our community. So on behalf of all of our council, our employees and staff, and all the cities, citizens of Morganton, I present this proclamation with our gratitude, and we just wish all of you the very best as you continue to grow in our community.
Thank you. And is it okay for me to say a few words?
Please.
All right. And is it okay for me to follow the same format of translating, interpreting?
Sure.
All right. So, good afternoon. My name is Charley Mendoza, and I am a member of the city's Human Relations Commission and also a proud member of Morganton's Hispanic community. On behalf of the commission, the individuals who have gathered here today and the vibrant Hispanic community of Morganton, I would like to thank the mayor and city council for issuing this proclamation that recognizes and honors the contributions made by the Hispanic community here in Morganton. Our presence here today is proof of the courage and resilience by those individuals who first saw opportunities in Morganton, laying the foundation and firmly growing roots within Morganton's soil. This proclamation is dedicated to them, as well as to those of us who continue to pursue the American dream, and for the future generations of Hispanics who will call Morganton their home. May this proclamation serve as a reminder to us that we can do it, and we did it, and that we are stronger when we stand together. We are excited for what the future holds and eagerly embrace the opportunity for collaboration with our city. Together, we will work to create a Morganton that is more united. So let us celebrate and acknowledge our Hispanic heritage, not just for these 30 days, but every day. And then I also want to call up a founder of Latinos Aventureros, who organized the turnout for today.
Sandra, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, Charley. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Aguirre, and I have lived in Morganton specifically for about 30 years. My mother moved here after my father passed away. Five children, single mom, worked three jobs, the typical story of an immigrant who moves to the United States. I am also the founder of Latinos Aventureros, and our mission is to motivate the community to discover the outdoors while also promoting outdoors diversity and inclusion. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, Thompson, and everyone present for today's Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. For me, Hispanic Heritage Month is a time of reflection, gratitude, and appreciation for my culture, upbringing, and values. It is the time to pause and look back at the sacrifices made by those before me. In my case, my mother. She moved here not knowing what to expect, but she made it and gave us the opportunity to, my siblings and I, to follow or pursue the American dream as well. This is also an opportunity to give us, or to give everyone else, a little bit of information of why we're here, why we do the things we do, why we eat the food we eat. So I think this is great because it's going to open doors for everyone to come together as a community and become one. I would like to challenge you all to give yourself the opportunity to meet someone who doesn't look like you, who doesn't speak like you, whose culture is who doesn't look like you, who doesn't speak like you, whose culture is different from yours. And at the end of the day, you'll find that we probably have more in common than we think. So thank you for acknowledging us today. Thank you for acknowledging that we are also contributing and impacting our communities in a positive way. Diversity is what makes our community unique and special. Gracias. And I'm going to say it in Spanish as well. Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Sandra Aguirre. He vivido en el condado de Perk durante 30 años. Soy fundadora de Latinos Aventureros, y nuestra misión es motivar a la comunidad latina a descubrir el aire libre, y al mismo tiempo promover la diversidad y la inclusión del aire libre. Me gustaría aprovechar esta oportunidad para agradecerle al alcalde Thompson por la proclamación de la herencia hispana esta noche. Para mí, el mes de la herencia hispana es un momento de reflexión, gratitud, y aprecio por mi cultura, educación, y valores. Es un momento para hacer una pausa y mirar atrás a los sacrificios hechos por quienes me presidieron. En mi caso, mi mamá. Darle un agradecimiento por todo su sacrificio, y por darnos la oportunidad de poder venir a nuestro país, y ella es una representación de muchas familias. Esto también nos da la oportunidad para informarle al pueblo anglo quiénes somos nosotros como hispanos, como latinos hoy, y en nuestras comunidades. A qué venimos, qué hacemos, por qué las cosas que hacemos. Me gustaría desafiarles con algo, y no solo a ellos, sino que a nosotros como latinos de igual manera, a que conozcamos a personas de diferentes culturas, y a que aprendamos un poquito de ellos. Y poder aprender, y así socializarnos, y a lo mejor descubriremos que probablemente tenemos más cosas en común de lo que pensamos. Así que gracias por conocer, por reconocer que estamos aquí, gracias por reconocer que también estamos contribuyendo e impactando a nuestras comunidades de una manera positiva. La diversidad es lo que nos hace a nuestra comunidad que seamos únicos y especial. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Sandra, before you sit down, would you like to say something about this weekend? There's an event or two going on this weekend. Could you spread the word, please?
Absolutely. So we are celebrating what we call Watte Fest, which is a Guatemalan festival, and we will begin on Friday night at 7:00. We will do like a parade through downtown Morganton. It's a two-mile, and you can come and join us. After that, we will have lots of food, and music, and different things that the Guatemalan community would like to present. And then Saturday, we will have the same dynamic, except for the parade.
What time is the parade?
The parade, it starts at 7:00 from Little Guatemala through downtown Morganton, back to Little Guatemala.
And there will be food on Saturday?
There will be food on both days.
Okay. Any questions for council? Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for Constitution Week 2023. I'd like to read that proclamation, please. Constitution Week Proclamation, September 17th through 23rd. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2023, marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Morganton, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Morganton to be affixed this 11th day of September of the year of our Lord, 2023. Approve this 11th day of September, 2023. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Renee Carswell, City Clerk, do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I ask Councilman Butch McSwain if he'll come forward, Ms. Becca Dennis, if she'll come forward, to accept that proclamation.
Becca, I am delighted to present this. And it seems amazingly fitting that we're celebrating 250-some years, or approximately 250 years later, with a recent group of immigrants, as we all started back then that way. Thank you very much for what you guys do, and our local societies and boards do here to keep this alive, and let's make sure on this day that we celebrate and remember the sacrifices some of our others made, that we continue this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it okay if I say a few words?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the Morganton City Council. My name is Rebecca Dennis. I'm a member of the Quaker Meadows Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and I want to thank you for the chance to speak to you. On September 3rd, 1783, over a year after the Battle of Yorktown had been won by the patriot colonies, the Revolutionary War for Independence was officially ended, as the Treaty of Paris was signed. The war was over, and our independence was now guaranteed, except there was one small problem. Months before the Battle of Yorktown, a frenzied group of men had built upon the Articles of the Confederation and Perpetual Union, the very first constitution of the United States of America. They'd been rewriting it off and on since 1777. This constitution had flaws, a lot of flaws. Issues such as financial crisis, and a lot of very unhappy farmers, caused our forefathers to realize that they needed to change some things. Finally, in 1787, the Constitutional Convention was held. From May to September, 55 delegates ranging in age from 26 to 81 argued and fought in their own miniature revolution, led with the dignity and prestige of George Washington and Benjamin Franklin, and the intellectual leadership of men like James Madison and others. These men asked how a strong continental government could be established. Finally, after four months, they had finished, and together they had created a constitution founded on the idea that had been written in our Declaration of Independence, that our government would indeed be deriving their powers from the consent of the governed. And on September 17th, 1787, 39 of the 55 men who had come from across the 13 colonies signed what we now call the Constitution of the United States of America. And 169 years later, the first observance of Constitution Week was so successful, but on January 5th, 1956, Senator Nolan introduced a Senate Joint Resolution to have the president designate September 17th through the 23rd annually as Constitution Week. The resolution was adopted on July 23rd, 1956, and signed into public law by President Eisenhower on August 2nd, 1956. And now we, the Quaker Meadows Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, invite you to join us this week in remembering and celebrating the constitution that our forefathers worked so hard to create. One way to celebrate is to participate in Bells Across America, an annual celebration of the signing of the U.S. Constitution, where people gathered to ring bells, much as the church bells of Philadelphia rang out when the U.S. Constitution was first signed at 4:00 p.m. on September 17th, 1787. Consider organizing a group to ring bells on September 17th for one minute at 4:00 p.m. to herald the beginning of this commemorative week. Thank you.
Rebecca, thank you so much. Okay, next on our agenda are some upcoming events, if you'll bear with me, please. We have quite a few. In downtown City Hall, downtown and City Hall, the farmer's market continues Saturday from 8:00 until noon at 300 Beach Street, and Wednesdays from 11:00 to 2:00 at the mini-market at 111 North Green Street. Our Art in the Hallway, Beth Oskowski is quilting and painting with paper. Beth is an accomplished quilting artist residing in Hickory. She has created her own style of painting with paper, and enjoys doing portraits. She sells her work at a local gallery. On Saturday, September 16th, from 3:00 to 5:00, 2040 Imagine Morganton Pop-up Event will be at Little Guatemala. The Burke Arts Council Art Crawl will be Thursday, September 21st, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in downtown Morganton, at Kama, our Performing Arts Center. Thursday, the 28th is opening night for Kama. The Georgia Players Guild will start at 7:30. Parks and Recreation, our College Street Pool is closed for the season. Our Splash Pad will close for the season by the end of September. On Saturday, September 23rd, from 10:00 to 12:00, Safe Kids Bike Rodeo will be at Catawba Meadows Park, sponsored by Morganton Public Safety. And our favorite, Friday and Saturday, on October 6th and 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., the Valley Hills Antique Power Club Tractor Show at Catawba Meadows Park. This is a free event with antique tractors, kids' events, food, music, and lots of fun. On Friday, October 6th, the Jack Town Ramblers and Butter Beans will be performing, and on Saturday, October 7th, Buffalo Cove Jam Program Kids, Darren Nicholson, and Appalachian Roadshow will be performing. And then on Friday and Saturday, October 20th and 21st, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., Spooky Meadows will be at Catawba Meadows Park. Okay, next on our agenda is North Carolina Municipal Power Agency Number One Update. Sally?
Yes, just a little bit of news. A couple of weeks ago, the City Council held a special council meeting, and that was to consider a power purchase agreement between the power agency, of which we are a part, and the Central Electric Power Cooperative in South Carolina. And that agreement allows us to sell 18% of our generating capacity at the nuclear plant. The results of that, all 19 cities of the agency have passed the agreement, and so effective January 1st, we will sell the excess capacity, and the 19 cities will recognize those savings with a net present value of $254 million. And those will be realized over the next 20-some years, going until the year 2043, when the life of the asset will either be renewed or retired.
Thank you. No action taken?
No action taken.
Great. We have a consent agenda, which I believe consents of 13 amendments. If you'll share with us, please.
It does. 13 individual items, and that seems like a lot, but there are an awful lot of budget amendments, because we have been receiving insurance reimbursements and some other grant dollars. So for those of you viewing at home, those items include minutes from the August 7th meeting, minutes from the special called meeting on August 22nd, 2023, tax releases and the amount of $20.02, an agreement to participate once again with Western Piedmont Council of Governments in their stormwater program where we do public outreach and advertising, and that is an amount of $13,122, accepting a $1,000 grant from the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association, allowing us to build a gaga pit, which is part of our Disabilities Adaptive Program for offering recreation programs. Excited about that. Now, a bunch of budget amendments for insurance reimbursements. The first one is $50,329.43, and that is for damage to a public safety vehicle and a public works truck. Then a budget amendment and insurance reimbursement recognizing $125,317.94, and that it was damage to an electric truck, and the generator at the water plant happened in a lightning storm. And then also approval of a budget amendment to accept a grant from our State Risk Management Group, $2,614.25, and that is for public safety and wastewater to purchase safety equipment. Approve a budget amendment for an insurance reimbursement for $8,149.27, and that is for damage done to a fire hydrant. Another budget amendment to recognize the receipt of a reimbursement for services, it's a water line extension, so the folks that have requested that are paying for that, and that is $31,470. Resolution to accept a grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, the Rural Transformation Grant Fund, and that is a grant that we have applied for improvements in downtown for a streetscape project, and that is for $450,000. And then amendments to our Code of Ordinances designating no parking on both sides of Williams Street, and that is one section from Wilson Street to Lee Street. That's last month's item that we removed, did some more information and research on, and are recommending that to you tonight. Then a resolution adopting the 2023 Water Shortage Response Plan. We are required to do that every five years. And then a ward of a contract for replacing our playground equipment. Freedom Park, Carbon City Park, and the small playground at the soccer complex, that is for the amount of $249,862.58, and we'll remind you that we are using ARPA funding to do those three pieces of playground equipment.
Do any members of council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I enjoy accepting money, as we all have talked about before, so I certainly will make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion?
I just, Ronnie, I'd just like to thank the staff for continually looking for other funds for our projects, because we couldn't do probably a lot of what we do without reaching out to other places, so thank you to all the staff.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Under New Business, we have a public hearing in consideration of permanently closing an alley behind buildings on the 100 block of West Union Street. I'll open the public hearing. Again, this is to talk and get input from citizens for or against closing the alley behind buildings on 100 block of West Union Street. Sally, could you give us an update?
Absolutely. I know Louis is probably sorry that he's not here, because it's the kind of thing he loves to talk about. So in downtown, we have a small alley, and when I say small, I mean really narrow and very difficult to work and do anything in. And it runs behind several buildings, behind, beside several buildings. And some of the owners there have come to us, and actually, it is the owners of properties at 10102 West Union and at 103 North Sterling Street. That sounds weird, but the alley's kind of shaped weird, and so it has existed for 100 years. And it has a ton of utilities moving through it. In some parts of the alley, you can't hardly even move side to side. There's some encroachments into the alley, into the public space, and all of those things. The property owners have asked that we revert the alley to them. What happens in that case is down the center line, the property goes to the owner of property on either side. We are maintaining a permanent easement to keep the utilities in there, not just city utilities, but also gas as well. What will happen is the property reverts, will go from the center line to each property, and then they will be responsible for maintaining and caring for that, leave the utilities to us. It has been properly advertised and posted.
And let it be duly noted that I'm going to allow Chris Jernigan to be recused, since he has a vested interest in one part of the alley. Thank you. What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt an ordinance permanently closing and abandoning a pedestrian alley, which from another public alley runs thence, approximately 10 feet in width southeastward alongside the building at 108 West Union Street, to the boundary line of the property at 106 West Union, thence narrowing and running northeastward between the properties at 106 West Union and 103 North Sterling, thence further narrowing and continuing northeastward with the building at 103 North Sterling on one side, and the buildings at 104 and 102 West Union on the other side, to the western boundary of the building and lot at 100 North Sterling Street, reserving permanent easement for all public utilities currently located within said alley, and further providing that title and fee to the lands crossed by said alley be vested in the current owners of record of the properties on either side of the alley, each to the center line of the existing alley.
Thank you so much. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? No, I'm sorry. We got to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we didn't actually close. Yeah, we didn't close the hearing.
It's not closed yet, so come forward.
My name's Eric Vesek. I'm buying a 106 West Union for Mr. Norville, and the way you were describing the property line being, as you're going to be easements for people to walk back between the South Mountains Building Home and the, like, this back of the Saints Barbershop, because you would say, you know, South Mountain Children's Home went on this side, and then Treeton went on this side, but there wouldn't be a legit easement for the person to cross their property. on this side, but there wouldn't be a legit easement for the person to cross their property.
So it will be up to the property owners to decide how the alley is used. You can maintain access for people to be there if you choose, or you can actually fence it off if you wanted to.
But you're saying like, but I'm saying like, the first, like, it's Sains or wherever that it meets, they could put a fence up and technically block us out?
No, it would have to be, the owners would all have to agree to the same thing.
Yep. Okay, I was making sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
In the summer, we had, I did not know this alley meandered back behind those buildings.
It's frightening to go to.
To say it's only five feet wide, very dark and damp is an understatement. It's, it's.
Narrow.
Yeah, it is. Really is.
Okay, any other comments? Oh, public hearing is now closed. We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next on our agenda is an award for Boss Road Sewer Improvement Project. Sally?
Greg Branch said earlier that we've been talking about gig service for a long time. We've been talking about the Boss Road Sewer Project for a long time as well. So the project is a new wastewater pump station and a new sewer line to serve areas in the 181 Boss Road area, would allow us enough sewer capacity for actually some housing projects that have been pursued in that area, but had to be turned down because there wasn't enough sewer capacity to happen. And you've got a big description there of the line. It will bore under, there will be a bore, directional bore, that will go under the Catawba River. All that will be encased and properly handled, cut across the golf course, go over to Boss Road, the old golf course, and then the pump station will be over near the fairgrounds. And at the end of the day, large improvements for sewer in the whole area. We received sealed bids, and DND opened those up on Tuesday, July 18th. We received three bids, which is great, because we had to have three to be able to open them. The lowest responsive responsible bid was submitted by Buckeye Bridge LLC of Canton, North Carolina, in the amount of $3,927.869, and you have the bid tab in your packet with the other bids. Bad news is that was over our budget for this project, as most things that are occurring today. So by law, we are allowed to negotiate and value engineer with the lowest bidder, and we did just that, and got the construction cost down to an amount not to exceed $3,586.707. I don't know why I can't speak numbers tonight. The engineering cost throughout the project, from the preliminary phases to get us all the way through to construction, is now at a total of $595,260. The staff recommends setting aside a $50,000 contingency, because there's a lot of moving parts to this, and we don't know what we'll face, bringing the total project, including that contingency, to $4,231,967. So how are we going to pay for it? So Dogwood Trust gave us a grant for this project of $1,695,000. We are recommending to you that we increase the amount of ARPA funding that we were pledging to this by $650,000 more, bringing a total ARPA funding to $2,350,000. Recall, we only got 4.8 million. So we are putting a lot of that money into this sewer project. And then the wastewater budget for '23-'24 would contribute $187,000 to make enough budget for the project. The project should begin in the next several weeks, if you approve this, and it is a 44-week project.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to award a contract to Buckeye Bridge LLC of Canton, North Carolina, in the amount of $3,586,707 to complete the Boss Road Sewer Improvements Project, and to allow the mayor and city manager to execute all agreements regarding the contract.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a second motion, please.
I'll motion to approve a budget amendment to increase the project fund by a transfer of $650,000 in ARPA funding and a transfer from wastewater of $187,000 to the Boss Road Sewer Project Fund.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just, I think we need to look at this as one of the better investments we could make to start seeing development up across that way. So I, you know, those are big numbers, but it should return big.
We hope so. And it's very necessary, and it will open up properties.
And it's a good use.
Not just there. It is.
Good use of ARPA funds that are limited and restricted, what we can use.
And very fortunate in getting the Dogwood money, and their requirement is to support ultimately affordable housing.
Right.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of award of a contract for IP transport for video services via fiber connectivity. I'll ask Greg to come forward again, please. Give us a summary.
Yeah, this is consideration of award for contract for those video services. As we know, video services continually changing, streaming services are evolving, and we're looking at these options to share cost, so we don't overinvest in equipment that is changing so quickly. And so we're, this is step one of getting connectivity from Morganton to Jackson, Tennessee. Jackson Energy Authority is going to provide our video services, which they provide to a lot of other providers as well, and they're sort of similar to us in the fact that they, Jackson, Tennessee, seen a need for a betterment of their community in the 2000s. And so they started to provide, they created this authority to allow utility, and one of those needs was communications. And so they've built a really robust network, and we're going to be able to tap into this, share the cost with a lot of other folks, because as we, as I said, this equipment is changing so rapidly. And so to keep us from overinvesting and paying for this equipment that may change for smaller amounts of subscribers, we only pay moving forward, once we get this connectivity to Jackson, and then we do the agreement with Jackson, we're only paying for the subscribers that we have. And so as that equipment changes, and our subscribers change, we only pay for those subscribers. And in essence, we're not overpaying for that equipment just to replace it every four or five years, and sometimes it's quicker than that. So that's what is here. The first agreement is with Ritter Communications that's going to get us from Atlanta to Jackson, Tennessee, and then the second one's with ERC Broadband to get us from Morganton to Atlanta. And so those are the two amounts for those contracts not to exceed, and we're looking for, to approve those three-year contract with both of those entities to get the connectivity to Jackson.
And I'll just say, as Greg explained, you know, when we brought the consultant in and we looked at decisions with particularly the TV part of Compass, we decided at that time that we were going to, number one, it was going to pay for itself with our programming, and that continues to increase. There is no stopping that. And we were also going to check our investments in the capital required to do that. And so this is really hard work by Greg and his staff to continue to do that, to continue to provide the TV to those in the community that want it, and to be able to do that, ultimately, hopefully with several moves of Compass becoming a streaming service at some point in time, when I guess that's all they'll be. And I don't have to remind, if you don't have Compass, I was with a group of people this weekend, and everybody's complaining about the whole fact that they no longer get ESPN, they can't watch football, the whole Disney package and all of that was dropped by Spectrum, and big doings across the country. This business is incredible, and the programming is crazy, and it's really, the cost of it is out of control, and it continues to go up and go up, and your choice is to pay it, and your choice is to charge it. So this is one way that we can continue to provide it and save money on this side, even if we can't save the money we're sending to the programmers to have the channels.
And then, and I will say that originally, or as part of this process, we're going to get our linear TV programming during this initial phase. That gets it to the cable boxes. But we're already getting the video, and then so it's, the next process is to turn that into a streaming service. And so, and it is, you know, it's still going to allow us to promote our community through Channel 2 and a lot of the stuff that we really value, so, and save us a lot of money. It's going to be about half the cost to do, go this route as it would be to buy the actual equipment and keep it up and keep it going, so.
Great.
It's a great interim to streaming, yeah.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to award a contract to ERC Broadband for 10 GBPS IP transport for video services via fiber connectivity to the city of Morganton, head in from Atlanta, not to exceed $2,600 per month for the next three years, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please.
I'll make a motion to award a contract to Ritter Communications for 10 GBPS IP transport for IP transport for video services via fiber connectivity to Atlanta from Jackson's facility in Tennessee, not to exceed $1,600 per month for the next three years, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Greg. Great presentation. Next, I believe, is consideration of a promise to the North Carolina MPA-1 Board of Commissioners.
Yes, so the Power Agency Board of Commissioners. Back earlier in the summer, Dan Brown, who had served as our electric director, who upon retirement stayed with us and served in capacity for the city on the power agency, passed away, and so we need to make a replacement in how we're represented on that group. Obviously, that is the group that was just involved in the decision to save $254 million, so it's fairly important. Would like to ask that you consider making Brooks Kirby, who is our electric director, the commissioner. Jesse Paris, our finance director, would be the first alternate, and then I would be the second alternate, so that we would always have someone there and able to vote. And then, not to vote on by the agency, but just to let you know, out of that group comes a rate committee, which is how our wholesale rates that come to us that drive our retail rates get set, and would like that Brooks Kirby be our appointment to the rate committee with Jesse Paris as the alternate.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to appoint the city staff as described below to the NCMPA-1 Board of Commissioners and the rate committee. Brooks Kirby, electric director, as commissioner to NCMPA-1 Board of Directors. Jesse Paris, finance director, as first alternate, and Sally Sandy, city manager, as second alternate. Brooks Kirby as the rate committee member, with Jesse Paris as the alternate.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. I'm sure Brooks is going to look after our rate and make sure it's good. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a contracting through Electric Cities for a cost of service study. Sally?
Yes, one last bit of business for electric. So also in this budget, you know that we have monies to migrate from our current billing system platform to another, and we do that through a hosted situation with Electric Cities. Also, looking at making some changes as we go forward in utility billing, dealing with being able to do automated metering, different opportunities for that, ways to update our distribution service, so that we can offer the same choices that some of the big power providers offer. In order to do that, you need to then, it's a good time to look at your rate structure, to review those. It's been a few years since we've done that for electric. So through Electric Cities, we can contract with a company to have a cost of service study done, and that's the beginning piece to then be able to look at your rate structure and set your rates. Would ask that you allow us to do that with Utility Financial Solutions, and that is the provider that's been vetted by Electric Cities, to do this for those member cities. And the cost for the study is $28,700. We can be given a $5,000 grant through Electric Cities for system betterment, and we would apply for that for this. So would ask for a budget amendment in the amount of $23,700 in the electric fund to fund the full study.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to award a contract to Utility Financial Services through Electric Cities for the purpose of conducting a cost of service study at a cost of $28,700, including approval for the mayor and/or city manager to execute all agreements regarding this contract.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Butch? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a second motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $28,700 to appropriate funding for cost of service study and budget for the $5,000 grant.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sally, do you have anything else for us?
I think that's it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, for one second, one minute. I think most people know I spent a lot of my life in athletics and one sort of another, and what I saw this weekend, the teamwork among our staff is just incredible. I think we had, what, 200-plus volunteers? I hope Abby got home in time to hear this. I was able to spend some time down in the headquarters office down there, and the way they put out fires and work with each other is absolutely exemplary. If the rest of our world could work like that, it would be incredible. Chief, after the, during the last concert Saturday night, I walked off the stage and went back up to the back, because I wanted to get in front of the speakers, which I recommend to everybody. While I was standing there, a couple from Charlotte came up to me and said, you know, we go to a lot of these, and I can't, they really bragged on how comfortable it was to see your guys walking around through the crowd, fully prepared, full uniforms, full things they might need, and to protect and take care of our crowd. And I hadn't really thought about that, because we don't see what others do at different, we read about them in the paper sometimes, of course, but it was noticed by a lot of our guests and should be really thanked. Everybody else, department heads, you know, one of the vendors said she's up and down the East Coast all the time, she's never had anybody help her unload her cars, her van, and to help set up tents and those kind of things. So we have an awful lot to be proud of and really want to thank everybody. I think everybody, all, everybody up here was involved at different ways, so I want to thank the community and the staff for what all we saw this weekend.
Thank you, Butch. I'd like to add a final comment, too, with, I got up Sunday morning fairly early for me, and went uptown to see what was left, and there wasn't anything left. Our sanitation and the crew really looked like they'd taken a vacuum and really cleaned it up, so thanks for a job well done. Any other comments?
They do an amazing job every year.
With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you all. Thank you all.